And we got the minutes. Great, great. I don't have my glasses, so I'm not gonna be able to see crap.
All right, well, as long as you can read.
Yeah, I can read during it. I'm talking about up on the screen.
I'm only kidding. Hey, Ken, how are you?
Oh, good, good. How you doing?
Good.
How's your husband looking? Good. Work has been absolutely bananas. I worked all day Saturday in the cold rain. It was horrible.
It was on Saturday. Did you enjoy the snow?
No, and the building tower was down, so all my antennas had absolutely no heat in them either. So it was like 40 degrees. I'm trying to open these before they get on mic.
I'm Nora. Have you guys ready?
Okay.
Here.
I think we're just waiting for Brian to let them in.
Everybody's in now. I was hoping Jeff would zoom in, but I am not seeing him.
Okay.
She's literally like a TV anchor woman tonight. Just talking to the mic and the camera.
So should we start?
I think you should open up the meeting.
Good evening and welcome to the April 14th Zone Board of Appeal hearing. We have, I guess, our applicants are on Zoom this evening, so there's no one in the audience here. So I guess we will, I guess, approach the screen instead of the audience. I will introduce the board members. To my right, serving as our clerk this evening is John Bowner. To my left is Ken Jardine. My name is Corinne Jardine. I am the chair this evening. And from our planning department is Mr. Brian Zickelli, Applying Director. We only have one applicant on for this evening, and we have one continued case. For the applicants, hopefully you've all been admitted into the Zoom meeting. And please just, I guess, each speak one at a time. And right now, we only have three board members. Hopefully, our fourth board member, Jeff Sauer, will be zooming in. But at least at the beginning of the meeting, we'll handle some administrative duties, and we'll see where we are after we complete those. So, board members, we are in receipt of minutes from the March 24th meeting. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to accept?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the minutes from March 24th.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minute passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the continued reading?
Yes, Madam Clerk. Our first continued item is 20 Pope's Lane, located in the highway corridor. We request for a special permit to allow for two storage containers to be placed on the property for over six months in a calendar year. The intention is for these to be permanent structures on the site. The request was made by EDM Construction, care of Sean McGill. It's docket number 25-5094. Madam Chair, we are in receipt of a letter requesting a continuance to our May 12th meeting, 2025. Just as we are requesting a continuance on this matter, EDM has not had enough time to look into this matter, and it is signed by Jacqueline McGill.
Do I have a motion to continue?
So moved.
A second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Cases continued until May 12th.
Okay, Madam Chair, we'll move on to our regular item. This is for 10 Newbury Street, Site 5, sorry, Suite 5, aka 20 Arch Metal Drive. It's also in the highway corridor zone. I request for a use variance under Table 1, Table of allowable uses, in order to operate a 33,000-square-foot recreation/entertainment/sports facility indoor and in a zone where this is not allowed. The request has been made by David Swan, docket number 25-5100.
Thank you. I would like to ask the Planning Director, at this point, Jeff Sauer hasn't zoomed in, so we don't have enough votes in order to be able to vote this in. So I can't see any of the people up there. Is Attorney McCann on the list? Who is speaking on behalf of?
So, yeah, I'm not sure. Is April, if you're there, maybe I have to unmute you, or maybe that's the problem.
Yes. Yes. Sorry, April is here. She has been the applicant on a lot of this.
Hold on a sec. We can barely hear you, but that's a... Hold on a second.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we just can't hear very well.
Is it like faint?
Yeah.
Yes.
Very.
I'll crank it up a little bit and turn here.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning.
April O'Joy, why don't you go ahead?
Hello? Can y'all hear us?
It's quite...
We are still working on the audio. We're having a hard time hearing you. So if you could just a minute.
See, that happens because obviously you can go without that bringing in this room, because you guys are quite large. If you guys could be able to do that, that could work.
On your mics, there's a... Yeah, on your mics, there's a push button.
I haven't had this issue before. This is just interesting.
If you just hold...
Have you got to hold it?
Yeah, you gotta hold it. And that beats everything, so that way you can crank up without getting...
Okay.
Yeah, sure. How does it sound? See how it sounds? I crank it up.
All right, why don't we try one more time?
Hello, hello?
It's a little better.
Hello?
All right, why don't you go right ahead, and we'll see how far we get.
All right. I will be speaking on behalf of Benchmark Group, David and April. My name is Joey Wilder.
I have a presentation here that they have. Let me see if this works. Okay.
Again, I think the issue is that we only have three board members.
Can I hear you with your fingers on?
I think the issue is that we only have three board members here, and we need four in order to be able to load up the case. So I think the only thing we can really do at this point is continue your case until... for a future meeting. Correct? So our next meeting is April 28th, which is in two weeks. Would you like us to continue until that time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Perfect. Do I have?
Madam Chair, just before. Could I ask a question? Sorry, Madam Chair, could I ask a question?
Yes, you're in.
Of the applicant. I'm just trying to understand, is... And I don't even know who's speaking right now to present this application. But is the owner of the property going to be present? And who online are you representing? I'm taking it David Swan?
So David Swan, April, and myself work for Benchmark Group. We're an architecture and engineering firm. We are representing the tenant that is looking to go into that former Big Lots space.
Okay, I guess my request through you, Madam Chair, would be to have this move along come April 28th, if you do choose to continue, is I would like to see the owner of this property also be part of this presentation, because we will have questions that I feel you will not be able to answer.
Understood.
And are you agreeable to that?
I agree that the owner should either be here in person or zoom in as well, because oftentimes there are questions that pertain to the whole property and not just the unit that you will be operating, you know, your recreational facility in. So again, I agree with John that we need to have the owner here as well.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hi, this is Nancy McCann. I do represent the owner of the property, so the owner is here by my representation tonight. However, I agree that without having four members present, we really can't go forward this evening. My one request is, has anyone tried to reach Mr. Sauer to see if he intends to log on sometime soon, rather than continuing two weeks?
Well, we can certainly try. Again, he's supposed to be zooming in, so I'm not sure if he wasn't able to do it or if he's having technical difficulties. But if you want to take a break, we can try and reach him, and then, if we can, great. If not, then we can continue. Is that agreeable?
Yes, since we're all here, I guess it makes sense to try and give him a call if someone has his cell phone number, just to see if he's available. And if not, then we'll be back in two weeks.
Okay.
All right, I just sent him a message.
Yeah, I heard the present... I heard the introduction from April and from Nancy.
Yes.
Yes.
So I was unable to reach him. I tried his phone.
Were you able to reach him?
Yeah, I got... Oh, wait. Yeah, he says he's having trouble connecting.
Oh, okay. Do you want him maybe to call the tech and see if maybe they can work it out? Because he said he's trying to log on.
Okay. Well, let's hold on.
Do you see him, like, in the waiting room?
Not yet.
Is that him, Jeff? I see somebody in the waiting, in the lobby.
Who am I hearing now?
Oh, here he is.
Oh.
Oh. There he went.
Oh, I see him.
Okay, he's here. We are four officially.
Whoa.
Get a mic. Can we get a mic check?
Yep.
Can you hear us, Jeff?
Yes.
Perfect.
Wonderful.
We can hear you.
All right, let's begin.
Okay, why don't we start from the beginning? April, if you could introduce yourself and begin your presentation again, so that Mr. Sauer and the rest of us can hear you as well.
Would it be okay if I take the lead?
Yes. No, no, no. I asked you to.
Okay. Oh, okay. My name is Joey Wilder. I am with Benchmark Group, representing the tenant. I'm here with April and David Swan. Well, David Swan's not here. We are an architecture and engineering firm. We would... Our tenant would like to go into the Big Lots space. It's currently a highway corridor zone with an adult-use overlay. Unfortunately, our tenant's use, which is an adventure park for children with attractions and trampolines, foam pits, and climbing walls, is not permitted under this use. So we're asking the board if there could be a variance to this, as there's already been a Monkey Joe's in the similar location as where we're proposing. Some information about the tenant, it's called Urban Air. And they're based out of Dallas, Texas. The concept is, they have specific operational hours, if you're interested in me providing that information. Their age of the participants is from five to 17 years old approximately. And they do have a small cafe and birthday party rooms to service the community. We feel that the facility would enhance the surrounding recreational sport venues, existing ones and arenas with good, clean, family-friendly fun, especially with some schools located within the area, and would help facilitate that group.
Thank you. Attorney McCann, before we begin asking questions, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't. I think that this location, this particular mall area, has had, as was stated, Monkey Joe's, which was a similar type of recreational facility, as was Monster Golf. Both of those were recreational types of facilities. So this type of use has been at this location, at this mall, for many years now, and the owner of the property is certainly in favor of offering this type of a recreational use in the town.
And these are some of the images that Urban Air provides to the kids as entertainment and attractions.
Okay, thank you. John, do you have any questions?
I do, thanks, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. We're having trouble with the audio. But to the presenter, I guess, can you ask me... I guess you're calling this an adventure park. Is that correct?
Correct.
And do you operate other facilities of this types, of this type around Massachusetts or across the country?
Yes, across the country.
Can I ask you how many?
Oh, quite a few. I don't know that off the top of my head, but I know that we're currently working on 20-plus locations. And just in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, I think there's about 20-plus.
But none in Massachusetts?
Not that I believe.
Okay. And this is going to consume the entire space that is currently Big Lots?
Correct.
And I noted all the drawings and the changes, so I don't really need to go over that. Any change to the outer facade?
Not more than the signage.
Just signage. And what would the hours of operation be?
Hours of operation are weekdays, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and then Sundays, 1:00 to 8:00 p.m.
I'm sorry, 1:00 to what?
8:00.
On Sunday?
Correct.
And about, approximately, how many employees?
About 20 to 50. It just varies on the day, as well as if there's birthday parties. So the weekdays don't have as many employees. Weekends, there's a lot more.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I think this question may be more for Attorney McCann. Attorney McCann, if you could answer... You know, this won't go on to site review if we approve this use variance, so I really... I guess I'm trying to frame my question the right way. We approved back in 2021 two different changes on that site. I believe one was a plumbing supply place and another, some other type of building supply place.
Roofing.
However, what I think this board failed in addressing, and as I drive in that site, is I just think the traffic flow in the parking lots and the speed bumps and all of it is just... It just doesn't seem to work properly. And I wanted to get a sense for if the owner is going to address any changes and your feeling about what I'm highlighting.
I am not... I represented both the plumbing supply as well as the roofing company that came before you, and they came before you because of outdoor storage, as opposed to the uses. And at that time, I do not recall any issues with regard to circulation or parking. And the planning board did review the site at that time for both of those. And I am certain with regard to the roofing supply, the planning board did review the site plan changes, because there were changes on the exterior proposed for both of those applications. I am not aware of any issues with regard to circulation or parking that you may be referring to. However, this is something that we could certainly... If there are specific items that you're aware of, Mr. Bowner, we could certainly discuss those with the planning staff to see if there is any circulation type of changes. Or you mentioned speed bumps. If those need to be addressed, we could certainly look at that through planning staff.
I would. And I only come at it from an area of, I feel when you pull in there off of Route 1, which is a challenge in its own right, I think we can all agree that, you know, you're on a highway that speeds probably average about 70 miles an hour, and you're trying to pull into that site. But then, once you enter that site, there's not a clear direction, to me, via either signage or curbing, or even colored curbing. So it really lends itself to kind of be the Wild West to me when you get in there, because it's this vast parking lot, so I really don't think there's parking issues. However, there is a directional issue for traffic. And then, I believe, there's some incredible potholes that exist as you go by Planet Fitness and out that direction, which is near one of, you know, one of the supply houses where the old In-N-Out was. So those may be more for comments, but I really think that because this won't go before planning, it's up to this board to kind of request that, you know, we try to address those things. So with that, I don't have any other questions.
We could certainly work with planning staff on directional signage. Directional signage is permitted under the bylaw to be placed. It's usually placed in coordination with planning staff. So we could certainly look at that. And I will alert the owner of the property to the potholes that you're mentioning. Some may or may not be on the property, but I'll certainly alert them to that.
Thank you. And I will just point out those potholes... Thank you. And I will just point out, those potholes have been there for some time. It's not new. It's not this winter. It's years. So anyway, okay, I yield, Madam Chair.
Ken.
I was just gonna ask about the parking. I mean, we already sort of breezed by that. And I guess there was adequate parking for big lots, but say if there's a couple of birthday parties, do you foresee any parking issues based on the allotment of how many spaces there is for that, for that particular facility, with there's other, you know, a bunch of other stuff, facilities around there that may, you know, at the same time have people frequenting their stores?
If that's a question for me, I'll say, no, we don't anticipate any problem, because this site, when it was originally developed, was, it had adequate parking for high-level retail use, which is a higher, or tends to be a high ratio for parking on square footage. And we've had other types of entertainment uses, as I said earlier, in this, in this retail mall, if you will. So no, we have adequate parking. We're not anticipating any issue with regard to parking.
Okay. And as far as the numbers, could I ask Brian, Mr. Zickelli?
So according to the 33,000 square foot building, they would need about 99 spaces. But this whole parking lot's governed by the whole site for square footage and require, I don't know the exact number off head, it was 900, they have to supply 915 total spaces, which includes handicap. And they have 929, so there's, they're overparked according to the zoning table. So, I mean, that's close to 1,000 spaces for these uses, which I believe is adequate.
Okay, thank you.
Last question, there was a question before, when did the highway corridor, sorry, this was a question before.
Coming to be?
Before cameras were rolling, was when the highway corridor started? 87?
It was 87, okay. And that is the first, I believe, there's an application on here from 1987.
Yeah, probably right when it changed.
Jeff, any questions?
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
I actually don't know who this question is for. Maybe Attorney McCann, maybe some of the board members. Long before I was on the board, my kids, who are now 32 and 30, played at a facility in this location. I can't remember whether it was called Tot Stop or, there was some, some use of this space. And if it required a variance at that time, I would think the variance would have stayed with the property. And if it was something else, like a special permit or whatever. But I remember clearly that exactly what this applicant is looking for is something that was there, because my kids played in those ball pits and climbed in that equipment. And it was in that old HQ space between.
Think it was Monkey Joe's?
Yes.
Monkey Joe's?
No, it wasn't Monkey Joe's. It was before that. It must, like I said, my kids are in their early 30s, and they must have been six or eight or 10 at the time. So it must have been 20 years ago, anyway.
Jeff, I agree.
So I'm just, I'm just surprised there's not, there's not a already, already a variance for this use on the property, because like I said, we had gone there many times and used, the use was exactly what this applicant is looking for.
Jeff, I agree with you. My kids went to the same facility. I don't remember what the name was, but it was in a different unit. That's why it's before us again. And I agree with you. I had the same conversation with Brian about the use variance. But because it's a different unit, that's why they are back asking for another use variance.
Okay, so the variance only goes with a particular unit?
That's the way, I guess, it's been handled, especially with this property. Because if you look at the different uses, both what we remember, Monkey Joe's, there was one other, like golf recreational facility, and even kind of the gym that's part of this property as well. So, but they were all located in different units within the same property.
That seems like a little bit of splitting hairs, as far as I'm concerned. If it's appropriate to zone this parcel for entertainment, I would think it would pertain to the whole parcel. And let's not keep coming back every time somebody chops a different piece of the, of the floor plan off and wants a new use variance.
Makes sense.
Anyway.
Yes.
I have no other questions. I'm just a little puzzled. And, you know, I, I'll save my comments for later. But I think John has already brought up an important point in that, you know, a plumbing supply place or a flooring place has different clientele walking across the parking lot than, you know, a kid's play structure. And the only reservation I would have is that we would make sure we have well-marked crosswalks and signage and not put anybody in danger with plumbers roaring through the parking lot, trying to get to their plumbing supplies.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm all set.
And I just have one question. What is the capacity for this recreational facility? I know that you said that there would be approximately 20 employees.
Correct.
So.
April, do you have a occupant load calc approximately for this location, by any chance?
Brian, do you have the, do you have, what the capacity is?
I don't think she was asking me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm asking April.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have it for one of the other locations, an approximate location?
Yes, I do. Let me look it up really quick for you.
Again, here.
She's gonna look it up. She's looking up the capacity.
I have one additional question. So in 1999, there was some type of entertainment facility put in.
Yep.
So whatever that was, it's probably what Jeff, 42, when your kids were two.
Yeah, because they were.
Monkey Joe's was 2007.
Yep. Yep. And then there was a golf place and a gym, so there was actually four.
Yeah. I agree with Jeff. It seems like overkill.
I do want to answer a follow-up question. Someone had asked if there's any stores in, or locations in Massachusetts. There are two. One in Bellingham, Massachusetts, and Brockton, Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one additional question, if I may.
I have one question. I'm just waiting for the capacity.
Oh, okay, he's still didn't get that.
While she's looking that up, how long do you anticipate the construction phase to last?
Typically, we ask for three months, but it also depends on the scope of work. We have gone out to the site to assess the building. We do have to accommodate a lot of attractions, and that's going to dictate how long our construction timeline is going to be. Most of it's going to be on the interior of the building. If I'm not mistaken, we have enough clearances, and that's one of the hardships of finding locations for this use, because of the height clearances that we're needing and the square footage. So it really is going to vary, but we do ask three months at a minimum, because really, the space in and of itself is not that complicated. It's the attractions.
Okay, thank you. John, why don't you ask your question while she's looking up the capacity?
I'd just like to know if the applicant will take a condition to address the directional signage and parking lot improvements. And I ask that because I, I think for me, it's too open-ended to just leave it at the will of, I guess, what the owner wants to do. I think there's a problem here. And I think Jeff pointed out well that now we're going to introduce, you know, potentially, children that I'm sure will be very excited to get into your place. And that lends itself for, you know, somewhat dangerous situations. Now, I think, in my opinion, up near the sidewalk and entrances to all these different suites that are part of this, you know, large campus, is probably the safest spots. I feel it's the entrance roadways and the lack of flow when you're coming off the highway there. Plus, it's used as a major cut-through, and you may not realize that. But, you know, many people use that to turn around and get onto Route 114 West. And I know there's speed bumps and there's things to deter, but I think, I'd like to see if you would take that as a condition.
That would be outside of the tenant's responsibility. So I would ask if Nancy can answer to that?
Yes, the owner certainly wants a safe place for all of its tenants, and particularly for this use. As we've all noted, there have been these uses now, this is perhaps the fourth or the fifth in history, to use the property for family-type of recreation. But certainly, we would take a condition that we would meet with planning staff to see what we need for directional signage to make things safe and to work with planning staff. I think we would certainly take a condition that we would work with planning staff with regard to circulation, signage, and pavement markings. That would be kind of crosswalk type of things.
Crosswalks.
Which certainly makes sense. So we want to make sure they're there. If they're not there, that they're there and in the right location. So pavement marking and directional signage, absolutely.
Madam Chair, so, I mean, I would say that we can easily assess pavement markings. There are a number of crosswalks on the site, and if all it is, is they need to be maintained. So I think what you're, I think the word is ma, like maintenance of.
I'm not sure that's it, though, because I think especially given that the registry of motor vehicles is in there. And to me, they're kind of like out in the middle of the parking lot. And then you have another building to the right that's kind of in the middle of the parking lot. So I'm not sure it is crosswalk. So I understand what you're saying. And I do, you know me, I'm the key of wanting things marked. So I believe, you know, painting crosswalks and that type of stuff certainly will help. But I really think it's when someone comes off of Route 1, there's almost like three options where they can go. But it's not very defined.
Well, so, yeah, directional signage is, it's easy. I didn't know if you were talking about additional infrastructure.
I am, I am.
Curbing and that sort of thing.
Yeah, curving.
That would be, that would not be this exercise.
I think some curbing is in order here, and I think because of the registry. And I think it's, it's, again, I find it confusing, and someone who goes in there enough, I think if, I'm familiar with the site and I'm confused, I can imagine people who are coming there for the first time would be more confused, is my indication. So that's my request.
And we would be agreeable to working with planning staff to make sure that circulation is properly marked with pavement markings and directional signage. This property, once again, has gone through site plan review on a number of occasions. When we start talking about curvings and things like that, that's, that's beyond the scope of this particular application that's before you, particularly when we're talking about a totally different tenant. But the owner is, and that would be the registry of motor vehicles that you just referenced, but we're certainly amenable to working with planning staff to make sure that the circulation is properly marked to, to make the, all of the tenants, but certainly this particular tenant, have safe access into, into the building. So that would be pavement markings and directional signage.
Okay, thank you. Have, have we found the maximum capacity yet?
Yes. On average, there are typically about 500 occupants. But that would be assessing it at the building code stage, and that is assuming that it's being used all at once. The space being a little bit larger than some of the typical, we probably would come out to 600 occupants, including the employees.
That's a, that's a big number.
One more question before you go to comments.
Yes. I just have one question, or actually, you go first, and then I'll go.
Is this site currently empty?
Yes.
It is?
Yes, she said it's currently empty.
I would like to point out on the occupant load, though, please note that that includes children. So if parking is of concern, they are not driving there themselves. So it's not 600 people driving to this location at once. It would be 600, you know, including children, five to 17. So.
Okay. And Attorney McCann, besides this unit that is now empty to be converted, are all of the other units occupied? Do you know?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay.
I believe that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zickelli, do we have any questions from anyone online?
Nope.
Okay. So let's begin deliberations. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I agree with Jeff. I, you know, there's been entertainment through variance at this site, at different suites within this site. So it's kind of redundant that we're here. I would, you know, I understand where the owner comes from with not wanting to do curbing and stuff. I really struggle with that, because to me, the planning department has had, or the planning board, I should say, has had a few bites at this apple already, and just as soon as 2021, just four years ago. And they felt it was okay, as it is. So I don't think it is okay. However, I don't feel like I'm gonna vote no against this because of that. I will take Attorney McCann at her word that she will work to improve this through directional signage, painting, whatever. But I really do feel like there's a flow problem there. And I hope I'm not voting for something that creates a problem. So, but I will vote in favor.
Ken.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll vote for this. I mean, it makes sense, because Monkey Joe's was, you know, in other entertainments places where companies were fulfilling that area, in that area. So I would vote for that.
Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will vote for this application as well. I think it's a good use of the space. I share some of John's concerns. But I am confident that Attorney McCann will work with planning staff and make things better. So I'm a yes.
Thank you. And I will also vote for this. I think it's a good use of the space. I also share the board members' concerns with regard to the flow and the safety in the parking lot. So we will, when we read out our decision, we will add some language with regard to that. So who would like to read?
Madam Chair, I move that we make a motion for 10 Newberry Street, Suite 5, AKA 20 Arch Meadow Drive, located in the highway corridor. This is docket number 20, I think that's an error, it's actually.
25.
Yeah, it's written 20. 25-5100. The motion is to issue a use variance under Table 1 of the zoning bylaw to operate at 33,000. to operate a 33,000-square-foot site recreation/entertainment/sports facility indoor in a zone where it is not allowed. And that the proposed extension/alteration of the use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood. Adjacent properties would not be adversely impacted. And a condition that directional signage and markings and flow of the site be addressed with the owner through the planning department.
Do I have a second?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, good luck.
Yes, thank you so much.
Bye.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, Jeff.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.